Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of Pennsylvania, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first of all, as it appears on your agenda, the invocation today was to be given by Councilmember Braker Harding, but Braker Harding graciously allowed me to take that position this time because there are a couple of things I wanted to say to people and to remind people about. Omaha in general, over the last couple of weeks, we didn't have a meeting last week, but over the last couple of weeks, Omaha in general and North Omaha in particular have suffered some rather great losses. I don't have to remind everyone or talk to everyone about yesterday when Haji Mohammed, second grader in OPS, was hit by a bus and was killed in that process. I can't imagine what the bus driver or the family or his classmates and teachers and others are going through at this point in time, but I know that they certainly deserve our prayers, as does Patricia "Big Mama" Barron. Big Mama was internationally, or at least nationally, known for her cooking, and people would come from all states around the country to visit Big Mama's kitchen. Patricia "Big Mama" Barron is a big loss to us as well, as is a proclamation that I will read very shortly here, and that's with Vera Johnson. Vera Johnson was one of the founding members of the Native Omaha Club, and we're going to be reading that up, and I'll be reading that up in just a few minutes, but for all three of them, I would ask a moment of silence in recognizing the importance of these people and what they left for us here in Omaha. Thank you very much. All may be seated. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you, and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this city council meeting. The council thanks you for being here this afternoon. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. As I mentioned earlier, we have one proclamation, we did two, we did a proclamation for Big Mama as well, but I presented that at her funeral services last week. But the family of Vera L. Johnson is here, many of them, one of the longtime friends of mine, Pat Mitchell. We have here a proclamation that I would like to read on behalf of the family as it relates to Vera, and it says, it begins, "Whereas Vera L. Johnson was born in Omaha, Nebraska, on August 12, 1927, and whereas Vera became involved in community affairs and began working for the Greater Omaha Community Association, or GOCA as it was known, days she assisted single mothers in maintaining the health and welfare of their families. And whereas Vera, most notable accomplishment, as recognized by former and current mayors, Nebraska governors, the Omaha City Council, and countless Omaha businesses, would be as a co-founder of the Native Omahans Club, which she and friend Betty McDonald originated. And whereas, on October 24, 1976, a group called the Omaha Homecoming Planning Committee had their first meeting and a vision of having a reunion of Native Omahans who left the city for various reasons, and whereas on December 13, 1976, the committee elected to call themselves the Native Omahans Club, and whereas the Native Omahans Club held their first homecoming on August 26, 1977, and for more than 40 years later, the week-long homecoming celebration flourishes and includes high school and family reunions, and therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Omaha, recognizing and thanks Vera Johnson for a tradition that has become the mainstay in North Omaha." Thank you all, and the family is here. And I'd like to take this opportunity to present this, and if you have some comments, we certainly would like for you to give.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I just want to take a minute to thank you, Ben, and the rest of the council for this proclamation. Certainly, my mother has left a footprint in the sand that won't be filled up. I want to thank all of her, these are the sassy seniors from which she was a part of that group who came. We have some family members here, my cousin Barbara, my best friend Debbie McCray, and also for Donna Stevens. So just thank you so much for the opportunity. She is going to be missed. I've had her my whole life, so you can't imagine how this is for me, but thank you very, very much. We are proud, my brother and I and his family are proud of her accomplishments, not just for Omaha Day, but for what she's done in the North Omaha community. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. And you all don't have to stay for the rest of it if you would like to move on. They sometimes get a little tedious here, so thank you.
Our attendance is going to be cut significantly.
Our attendance will be cut significantly, but it'll be okay. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Coventry North located southwest of 204th and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, really here just to answer questions. This is a 45-acre preliminary, revised preliminary plat on the southwest corner of 204th and Q Streets. It'll be plotted into 13 lots and will be for mixed use. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number six? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item six, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Christ for the City International to allow large group living in a CC district for property located at 5835 North 90th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? I'm sorry, are there proponent?
I can answer questions, but...
Okay, all right, but you're here to answer any question, someone's here, and you're a proponent. Okay. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to second to approve item seven, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, an application to consider, a Class I liquor license for Eat, Drink, Play LLC doing business as The Sand Bar located at 3809 North 90th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim McCormick at 1859 South 120th Street, here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moving to second to approve item eight, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider, a Class I liquor license for Jay-Z Maru LLC doing business as Maru Sushi Korean Grill located at 5032 South 108th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Okay, this is Charles Chang.
Yeah, name, address for the record, please.
Yeah, this is Charles Chang, and liquor license number...
We have all that, we just need your name and address for the record.
Okay, so it's Jay-Z Maru LLC doing business as Maru Sushi Korean Grill. This is Charles Chang, the manager.
Okay, he's the, are you the manager?
Yes.
Okay, so what's your address, sir?
It's 5032 South 108th Street.
Okay, and you're here to answer any questions that we might ask?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number nine? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to consider, a Class IB liquor license for Reno's Karaoke LLC doing business as Reno's Karaoke located at 3909 Farnum Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This again is the Blackstone area, another addition to the Blackstone area. Mr. Lund, who's one of the owners, is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Will you be singing, Mr. Kelly? You've been doing many of the karaoke...
Mr. Pauls.
If he's gonna do any singing.
I promise not to do any karaoke.
Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to appoint Kevin J. Colje as manager of 1992, Inc., doing business as The Stadium Club to their Class C liquor license located at 414, 416, and 418 South 10th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Does it wish to counsel?
Move to second to approve item 11, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to appoint Christopher W. Codigen as manager of Omaha Exposition and Racing, Inc., doing business as Horseman's Park to their Class CK liquor license located at 6303 Q Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, again, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Mr. Codigen is here if you have any questions of him. He's the new manager, new food manager out of Horseman's Park.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item 12, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem. Councilmember Jerem passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 12 is approved, six to zero. Item 13, an application to appoint Robert L. Stryker as manager of TP Restaurant Omaha LLC doing business as Twin Peaks to their Class I liquor license located at 17330 West Center Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Robert L. Stryker, 17330 West Center Road.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an application to appoint Stephen E. Roy as manager of Wadsworth Old Chicago, Inc., doing business as Old Chicago to their Class I liquor license located at 425 North 78th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Steve Roy for 425 North 78th Street.
Thank you, and you're here to answer any questions with me. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together. Applications to consider special designated liquor licenses for Old Market Roja LLC doing business as Roja Mexican Grill and Margarita Bar located at 1212 Harney Street and Roja Mexican Grill and Margarita Bar located at 17010 Wright Plaza for Beer Gardens on May 15, 2018, from 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. with music until 1:00 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda items number 15 and 16 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi there, I'm Patrick Lynch, 13130 Linnamore Circle, and here to answer questions for either Roja location.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
I would make a motion to approve and no complaints last year.
Moving to second to approve items 15 and 16, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 and 16 are approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 17 through 23 were held on March 27, 2018. Has been a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, moving to second to approve.
He's trying to get us back on track.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 17 through 23 are approved, seven to zero.
I feel like I need to read fast now. The public hearing on agenda items numbers 24 through 52 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved, second.
Moving to second to approve, no, for the lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 53, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter on certain lots in the City of Omaha Group 2018-07 is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 54, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation on certain lots in the City of Omaha Group 2018-08 is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Move the amendment, are you gonna move the amendment?
Move the amendment of the whole, second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 55, a resolution to approve the Moxie Hotel Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for a redevelopment site located at 409 South 12th Street in the amount of $1,931,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This is a proposal for a six-story, 105-room hotel. As indicated, it's at 12th and Harney. This is a landmark building, the adjoining parking structure, it's this corner site here, you're probably familiar with it because it's occupied by the diner. This will be a Marriott franchise hotel. Developers are Hawkeye Hotels out of Coralville, Iowa. They are, well, they have a strong relationship with Marriott, and like I said, this will be another one of the Marriott franchise, and they are experienced hotel developers. Total project represents an investment of about $15 million in the Old Market District. TIF request is $1,931,000. And in addition to public improvements, there's a $20,000 voluntary contribution to the downtown improvements fund involved. This project meets the required criteria of the TIF program, it's an appropriate use for the property, and it complies with the city's master plan.
Thank you.
We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? See, yes, sir. Proponent? Yes, sir.
My name is Samir Patel. Address is 2861 Spring Row Circle, Coralville, Iowa. I'm a development manager at Hawkeye Hotels based out of Iowa City. Just to give you a little story behind, a story on the developer... Just to give you a little story behind, a story on the developer, behind the development. Hawkeye Hotels was formed in 1982 when Bob and Angie Patel immigrated to America with a dollar and a dream. They purchased a shut-down 17-room roadside motel in Mina, Arkansas. This was their first introduction to the hospitality industry. In 1994, they became Marriott's first minority franchisee. It's a humbling story that shows the qualities of sacrifice, hard work, and determination. Hawkeye Hotels now owns and operates over 50 hotels across the United States and employs over 1,500 talented individuals. We currently have eight hotels under active construction with an additional 20 in the pipeline slated to start in the next 24 months. I'd like to thank everyone here in the City of Omaha for giving us the opportunity to present this development in one of the most iconic locations in downtown. As Don stated, we are proposing a six-story custom-built Moxie by Marriott. We believe that this hotel will not only have a positive economic impact on the surrounding shops and restaurants in the Old Market, but as well as the greater downtown of Omaha as a whole. Again, thank you for your time and consideration for this project.
Thank you, and thank you for the story.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I'd like to just talk a couple seconds on this project. First, to thank Hawkeye Hotels for your investment in Omaha. It's a significant investment. I'd like to thank you from early on, having Ms. Coleman represent your interests here and work with the various communities, bringing the alley pointer team into your project to make sure the project was reflective of its environment. The processes that you've gone through from planning and public works to the urban design codes and the historical landmarks board, every step of the way, you've been patient and cooperative, and I'd like to commend you for that and wish you well on this project. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Moving to second to approve item 55, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Yes. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 55 is approved, seven to zero. Item 56, an ordinance vacating a portion of the East-West Alley between 68th Avenue and 69th Street, south of Farnham Street, in abutting lots 22, 23, 40, and 41 of Sunset Terrace. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 57, an ordinance to accept the bid of Payless Office Products to provide janitorial supplies for the Omaha Fire Department for a one-year term at a total cost of $21,609.08 with the option to extend the agreement monthly for an additional 24-month period at no increase in costs.
Public hearing on agenda item number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Non-action items, items 58 through 77 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion, Jerem?
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Pauls.